All right, we are all here. Great. We have reconvened and there is nothing to disclose from closed session, nothing to report out. So we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:07 PM. And that takes us to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, February the fourteenth, 2024. It is 6:07 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. Meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, February 16th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, February 18th, also at 6:00, or sorry, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.ellgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Thank you. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber and provided to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Heckard prior to consideration of the agenda item. And with that, Mayor, we would be moving into the roll call. For the roll call, Councilmember Rubles.
Present.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Soen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. Thank you. Next up is our land acknowledgement. Would our Vice Mayor please assist?
Yes, thank you. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite CSD Director Angela Spees, who is with us this evening, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, and that one item being 4.1, Proclamation, recognition of Black History Month.
Excellent. At this time, I would like to invite up Dr. Tekoi Porter to the podium as I read our proclamation for Black History Month, February 2024. Whereas since 1976, February has been designated Black History Month as a time in which especially memorable events are recognized and celebrated, honoring and affirming the importance of African-American history and culture as an essential element to the foundation of American history. And whereas the city of Elk Grove recently hosted Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Breakfast, where we celebrated his legacy and lasting impact on our community, and we were honored to have Dr. Tekoi Porter as the event's keynote speaker. And whereas Dr. Tekoi Porter, an Elk Grove resident, is the founder, president, and executive director of National Action Network Sacramento, a civil rights organization that advocates for justice, equality, and opportunity. He has effectively led this organization, building partnerships, mobilizing communities, and influencing policies. And whereas Dr. Porter is also the senior pastor at Genesis Church in Sacramento, where he has faithfully served for over 24 years and led many community development initiatives. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Elk Grove, the city council of the city of Elk Grove hereby confirms and affirms and proclaims February 2024 as Black History Month in the city of Elk Grove, and we thank Dr. Tekoi Porter for his commitment to the community, signed this February the fourteenth, 2024. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much.
Yes, the floor is yours.
And I got three minutes, so I want to make sure I stay in time. This is a surreal moment for me. I'm totally grateful you don't think about these things while growing up that this would ever happen. So thank you so much for this, Mayor Singh Allen, and my friend Rob Brewer, Vice Mayor there, and the esteemed members of this council. I'm again deeply honored and humbled to receive this proclamation from the city of Elk Grove, affirming February 2024 as Black History Month. And as a recipient of this recognition, I'm generally grateful for the opportunity to be a part of this celebration, highlighting the rich heritage and invaluable contributions of African-Americans in our city and region. Again, it was my privilege to be able to keynote the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Community Breakfast, even though in the state I was in, it was a great opportunity to be able to honor Dr. King's enduring legacy and reflected on the significant impact he had on communities across our nation. Before I go any further, I will need to thank my family, especially my wife and some church members who are here. Could y'all stand up? Please, thank you. I have to take all of them out for Valentine's Day.
Oh, good. Absolutely.
Exactly. It's on Pastor, right? But thank you all for coming. And as Pastor of Genesis Church in Sacramento and the President of NAM Sacramento, my journey has been guided by a fervent commitment to building others, uplifting voices, bridging divides, and cultivating an inclusive society where every individual, regardless of background, can thrive. Yet, as with any journey, there has been challenges along the way. The path of social activism is often marked by adversity, setbacks, and moments of despair. But in such times, having a home in Elk Grove to retreat to and find solace has been indispensable for the peace and well-being of me and my family. And over the past three decades, I have witnessed Elk Grove's remarkable transformation from a rural agricultural community into the vibrant and diverse city it is today. It's been a place where my family and I have not just existed, but truly lived, realizing our dreams from owning a starter home in 95624 to constructing one from the ground up. Elk Grove has provided us with the opportunity to flourish. And the exceptional education provided by the Elk Grove University School District has also played a significant role in the success of my three children. They all graduated from Kasuna's Oaks High School with honors and are now thriving in their academic pursuits and careers. So in closing, I again extend my heartfelt gratitude to the mayor and the city council of Elk Grove for this proclamation and for your steadfast commitment to honoring Black history and culture. Thank you so much. Again, I'm honored.
Thank you. And if you can stay right there, sir, we have a proclamation, but I wanted to say something. And that is, you know, just knowing the condition that you were in, but you still turned up for your community speaks volumes to your dedication. I know you were in dire condition in the hospital, and it's a clear sign of your strong will and determination and that God is not done with you, that your purpose is giving back and all of the wonderful things that you've done for the last several decades. We are so grateful, not only for our city, but for our region. Congratulations once again.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Porter, I also want to say thank you because I know that you've done MLK Celebration at Capital Christian for so many years. I've attended several of the services on MLK, and you've always done an amazing job. Definitely always felt the spirit move, so super appreciative. Thank you for everything you're doing in the community and everything you've done.
Wow, thank you.
And Dr. Porter, definitely want to, I'm glad that you are here so you can receive your flowers today because you and I know the condition you're in and that you summoned, that God summoned you out of bed, and you presented a stirring, uplifting, positive presentation that day on January 13th. And that does not go unnoticed among, for the city, or for the council, or for myself. It shows the love that you have for our city and the love that your wife has for you and sending you straight back to bed. So we can enjoy you for more years to come. And so I am definitely thankful that you are here in Elk Grove, one of our own residents, and really representing the way you are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. I pretty appreciate that.
Will you all come down? Is that a street?
Wonderful. Come on up, too. Yeah. Congratulations. Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is so great. Congratulations. Thank you. Bishop? I'll get you a sing.
I don't think.
I heard a snippet. He actually.
Sorry we didn't hear you today. So we gotta watch out.
Would you like your members to join?
Come on, please. You may like your Valentine.
Come on. This is all about celebrating community.
Yeah, you gotta earn that one. Valentine's Day.
That's right.
Please.
How are you? Fine, how are you? Very good.
How are you?
Thank you. Wonderful.
There's 30 minutes.
All right, so let's just get all real comfortable.
Yeah.
Are we good?
Hold this.
All right, so next up is public comments. Folks signed up here. First is Jackie Perez, followed by Sandy M.
Okay. I'm not very good at this. You guys know that. So I'm here to speak on the warming center. I read an article the other day from the Elk Grove News saying that there's only a handful of people in Elk Grove that is concerned about what's happening. I feel bad because what they just did was really positive and awesome, so I don't want to kill your parade, but I love Elk Grove, just like you do, and I'm trying to fight for it. So I've noticed that, like, the Elk Grove News spoke about a small group of people only caring about what's going on in Elk Grove. And I had sent pictures to you guys of a lot of things that we've seen and how things have changed in the last year in Elk Grove since there's been conversations about a warming center and a homeless Elk Grove's building. People are kind of coming in droves to Elk Grove, and some people in our group have talked to them, and they're coming as far as Oakland. And they're using businesses' hoses to wash their clothes and to, you know, take care of themselves. And we're just finding lots of people, you know, parking out and just hanging out with all their belongings all up and down the boulevard. And a year ago, I don't think that I would have ever thought in my wildest imaginations that I'd have to fight for this town and for the safety of this town and that I would even be up here speaking like this because this is not something that I'm passionate about, but not something I feel like I'm good at. I just, what I was starting to say was that Elk Grove News was saying that there's only a small group of us that are trying to fight this, or trying to help, or whatever you want to say. But we have spoken to so many different people in Elk Grove that have said they're living behind Bel Air, they're camping out at Dollar Store, the ladies there are scared for their safety, they're living there in front of Dollar Store, they're meandering around behind the houses in Bel Air, the houses behind Bel Air, I should say. So there's a lot of people from every culture that we have spoke to, whether it's Indian or whatever. They're just people that are passionate about what's going on and worried about their safety of their children. And I just wanted to make sure that you guys got the pictures that we emailed to you about how much Elk Grove is changing in just this small amount of time, mostly since the warming center opened, but since we've been talking about opening a homeless shelter as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next up is Sandy M., followed by Debbie Woolley.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you so much for having us here. Can everyone hear me? Yes? Okay, great. Thank you so much for being public servants, for having taken these positions on, for taking your oaths of office to defend and uphold the constitutions. We are coming to you this evening in peace, as we, the people, to give you notice and instruction so that you and your agents may provide due care. This national lockdown notice has already been given to 50 state governors, to the President of the United States, and to the Supreme Court, to the United States Senate, and the United States Congress. We are now giving you a copy. In January, we learned that the federal government, in alignment with the World Health Organization, has announced an amendment to a credible threat of a public health emergency. Their expanding countermeasures now include both Ebola and Marburg viruses and extension of liability immunity to manufacturers, distributors, program planners, qualified persons and their officials, agents, and employees. We have included this report in our notice envelope just given to you. We have also learned that the government was never granted any authority to lock down the people, even in times of emergency. The main object of government is the protection and preservation of personal rights, private property, and public liberties. The government just serves for our benefit as public officers, trustees, and servants of the people. We are also attaching a list of unalienable rights, which includes the right to accept or refuse any medical treatment for any reason. Since this council has a history of putting the city under health emergency orders for extended periods of times, we are very concerned that another round of involuntary lockdowns and health orders could occur in our fair city. My colleague will continue.
Hi, I'm Debbie Woolley, and I'm with We the People. Please take notice that all states in our republican form of government have sworn to protect individual liberty as a condition to be hired as trustees. The people of America are all guaranteed the same rights in all the states. As an elected official, do you believe it's your duty to always protect the natural rights of the people so they are guaranteed enjoyment of all their natural rights? Or do you believe that in some time of panic or emergency that you can remove the people's rights to freely exercise liberty, movement, worship, commerce, or any other purpose that is lawful? If so, please show constitutional authority where you get that power, posting this granted authority conspicuously within the next 15 days, notifying the public and all agents. If you cannot show where you got the authority and you take any action blocking the people's rights to enjoy freedom, then any lockdown mandate or forced use of any medical device will be construed as being done with malice, intent, full knowledge and understanding against your trust indenture, your contract, your contract with the people. That would be the Constitution. This notice is given in peace and with the love of Christ that you and your agents may provide due care to those who have all political power, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, David Capazano. Is that you, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Dave, and I'd like to thank the mayor and the vice mayor and the city council and the staff for all your hard work and dedication to the city of Elk Grove. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Dave was our last speaker, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. Before we go on to our city manager's report, Ms. Bontrager, I noticed your expression when we heard from a previous public comment as it relates to the warming center. Is there any clarifying information you wanted to provide perhaps?
Yes, absolutely. So we really appreciate our community members letting us know of any issues that they're having out with possible guests of the shelter or when they're seeing people experiencing homelessness in our community. I did have a chance to review Ms. Perez's photos with our navigation team, which I'm pleased to say now includes two navigators, including one with extensive experience with folks with severe mental health issues. And they were familiar with all of the individuals in the photos and have actively worked to connect them to resources. We are seeing people, folks experiencing homelessness, often move around quite a bit and come in and out of our community. And we do actively work for those who have come from another community or may have left their belongings in another location. We do try to connect them back with that community from which they came. And so we are not seeing that the shelter itself is creating a draw for folks to come to Old Town, but rather it's more related to some of the actions that other cities have undertaken or the county in terms of the sweeps that they've done recently related to homelessness. But I would encourage anyone watching this meeting, please email me personally if you're seeing things out in the community, and I will have our navigation team work to address them. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that information. Next up is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Jason Bearman, city manager. Several items report on this evening. We do have a youth commission event coming up. Members of the community are invited to attend the Path to Positivity event on Saturday, February 24th, from noon to 4:00 at the Wackford Community Center, which is on Bruceville Road. The free event aims to destigmatize and raise awareness about the critical issue of mental health in the teen population, provide resources from citywide organizations, guest speakers, activities, food, music, and games. Teens can even earn volunteer hours. Visit the city's website for more information. Elk Grove's diversity is one of its most amazing characteristics. Applications are being accepted for a vacancy on the city's Diversity and Inclusion Commission through February 21st. This is a volunteer position for Elk Grove residents appointed by the mayor with the consensus of the city council. Commissioners assist the city through education, outreach, advocacy, and acting as community ambassadors. Volunteers help create long-lasting and positive impacts on our quality of life. Nominations for the 2024 Stars of Service Awards, formerly known as the Mayor's Volunteer Awards, are being accepted online through February 29th to recognize those individuals, businesses, and organizations that serve our community. The grant application period for funding for next year is closing for our nonprofits. Today is the last day to apply for the Community Development Block Grant and Community Service Grant. The event's sponsorship grant applications will close on February 23rd. Visit the city's website at elkgrovecity.org/grants for more information. And finally, in accordance with the city's holiday schedule, City Hall will be closed next Monday, February 19th, in observance of Washington's birthday. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for our city manager? Seeing none? Thank you. We'll move on to our next item. Our next item is our consent calendar items, and I have a readout for item 7.5, which is the adopting the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the employment agreement with Jason Bearman as city manager. Item 7.5 is an amendment to the city manager contract. Based on positive performance, the city manager's base salary is to be increased to $315,000, and he is to be provided 40 hours of additional management leave annually, as explained in the staff report. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone signed up for this item, for public comment, for consent. I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and look for council approval.
Move consent.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Under Section 8, there are no public hearings on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 9, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 9.1, which is receiving and file the Elk Grove Aquatic Center Annual Report for 2023.
Excellent.
Speaker, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Lana Yoshimura, Community Event Center Manager, happy to be here this Valentine's Day to give you the 2023 Aquatic Center report. I wanted to preface this by saying, when I joined the city in 2018, the aquatic center were three very large holes in the ground. Today, we are looking to be one of the premier aquatics facilities in the region. We are often sought after to host meets. We have swim teams wanting to swim there and lots of interest in participating in events there. When I began in 2018, one of the conversations was that this facility would always be subsidized by the city. Aquatics facilities are typically subsidized, they don't make the money that it needs to get complete cost recovery for because we want to make sure that aquatics facilities have public value. As a recreation professional, I will tell you that swimming is a lifesaving skill, and we want to make sure everyone in our community has access to that. The facility is now about five years old, which is really hard for me to believe, and we're starting to see normal wear and tear on things. So we're starting to see that reflected in our maintenance costs. The last part I would like to leave you with is that I think one of our frustrations is that inflation and economic factors are weighing on the facility and causing some budget overruns that we are working to mitigate. And I will send it over to Mike Dobson, the Kasuna CSD Director of Recreation, to talk about aquatic programming, and then I will come back to you about the budget and then what we're doing to mitigate some of the circumstances.
Excellent, thank you, Lana. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Brewer, members of the city council. I'm Mike Dobson, Recreation and Community Services Director for Kasuna CSD, and I'm here to report out tonight on the 2023 year for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. How do I?
Mr. Dobson, there's a keyboard in the podium. If you pull that out, and you should be able to advance using the keys.
Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
So I guess prior to starting the presentation, I do want to first like to acknowledge the strong working relationship both myself and my staff have with your city staff, most notably Lana, the Community Event Center Manager out at District 56. I've had the privilege of working with Lana over the last five years, and she's been a true partner over this time as we continue to make the Elk Grove Aquatic Center one of the premier 50-meter and we want to make sure everyone in our community has access to that. The facility is now about five years old, which is really hard for me to believe, and we're starting to see normal wear and tear on things. So, we're starting to see that reflected in our maintenance costs. The last part I would like to leave you with is that I think one of our frustrations is that inflation and economic factors are weighing on the facility and causing some budget overruns that we are working to mitigate, and I will send it over to Mike Dobson, the Kasumna CSD Director of Recreation, to talk about aquatic programming, and then I will come back to you about the budget and then what we're doing to mitigate some of the circumstances.
Excellent, thank you, Lana. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Brewer, members of the city council. I'm Mike Dobson, Recreation and Community Services Director for Kasumna CSD, and I'm here to report out tonight on the 2023 year for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. How do I?
Mr. Dobson, there's a keyboard in the podium. If you pull that out, and you should be able to advance using the keys.
Perfect. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
So, I guess prior to starting the presentation, I do want to first like to acknowledge the strong working relationship both myself and my staff have with your city staff, most notably Lana, the Community Event Center Manager out at District 56. I've had the privilege of working with Lana over the last five years, and she's been a true partner over this time as we continue to make the Elk Grove Aquatic Center one of the premier 50-meter aquatic complexes in all of Northern California. So, to start with, we just have a listing out of some of our aquatic programs that we offer there. I will go into some more detail with these throughout the presentation. So, as we look at some of the programs by the numbers, I think I'd first like to point out that I think in some of what Lana will talk about is about the fiscal year. These dates are more of a calendar year, specifically so we can see what a true year looks like rather than going over two summers, especially since this last year was probably the first year post-pandemic that we had a really clear snapshot of what the pool could do and what the pool could look like. So, as we have some statistical things here, you see program hours, you know, large numbers of participants. There is the Laguna Ridge discount for some of the programs as directed by the city council years ago for some of those members, and then some of the revenue associated with that. One of the areas I want to specifically point out is the lifeguard training. So, you'll see that there's no revenue in there. One of the things proactively we did last year was we stopped charging our staff to take this class. We wanted to remove cost as a barrier. In doing so, we went from having 120-ish staff in the summer of 2022 to almost 200 staff in this last summer. You know, also in doing so, this is like basically put us as a true benchmark in the industry where we are probably the only large municipal aquatic center post-pandemic that not only is at pre-pandemic staffing levels, but for us, we are exceeding it. One of the programs I specifically wanted to call out from this presentation is our water fitness program. As you see listed here, we have a number of water fitness programs that we offer. Some of these are the typical classes you would see. Other ones are very specific and kind of specialized, as we have specialized instructors. This makes our fitness, our water fitness for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center almost unrivaled, I would say, throughout the state, specifically because of some of the specialized things that we have. And this has increased, you know, substantially over the last year, and I would attribute that to some of our demo days where we've offered it free to the community kind of to test out. That have been largely successful, that they've wanted to then sign up after. The next slide is just kind of an aggregate of all of the aforementioned programs with just a large picture of all of the program hours, all of the participants throughout the course of the calendar year, and then all of the total revenue. Two things that came back this last summer due to the increased staffing levels were both pool parties and pool rentals. As you see here, we unfortunately weren't able to offer this, I think, since 2019, just because as a decision both with my staff and Lana, we wanted to prioritize things that had high visibility or core aquatics programs or were higher in revenue. But fortunately, these came back, and then pool parties are continuing to grow as we are expanding the footprint, both with the room, deck utilization, and some other things to further increase some of those revenues. The CSD staff, we have a number of first responder certifications mandated by the state and the county, as you see there. So, we have a number of lifeguards. Also, we have a number of the fitness instructor certifications that I've alluded to in the past with the Aquatic Exercise Association and the Aqua Body Strong. Basically, with these certifications, it allows us to teach that wide array of water fitness classes. I do also want to point out our lifeguard training instructors and our instructor trainers. These are invaluable certifications that the staff possess because it allows for us to not only teach the lifeguard training class in-house, but to further train instructors. So, we have a succession plan that when instructors leave, we can continue to do this in-house, thereby saving both time and making it efficiency and having us certify and recertify any staff at any given time. Next, I will address some of the challenges, you know, with an aquatics facility. First, we'll talk about some of the facility issues. So, as Lana mentioned, you know, as we are coming up on, you know, the fifth year of operation, it goes without saying, many of the things that we deal with now are long past their warranty. Over this last year, you know, we've had some issues with the water slide, is the cracked flume. So, I guess for everyone listening, the flume is the tube that the riders ride in. So, that was replaced along with some electrical issues in June of this last summer. There was the replacement of the bleachers, those in-ground cement bleachers around the 50-meter pool in September of 2023, prior to the opening of the summer, the chairlift replacement in May, and then throughout the course of the year, various pool pump replacements and repairs that are needed just with the ongoing use and the continued use, as well as the lighting on the pool deck with some faulty wiring that was replaced just this last January. Next, I'm going to look at some of the challenges from an operational standpoint. I think one of the first challenges, and this is, I guess, something that we as a CSD have as a challenge, is the staff that work at our aquatics facility gain valuable experience and high-level competencies, which makes them very valuable for promotional opportunities. In doing so, we've probably had, I think, 13 full-time aquatic staff for both managing Wackford and the Elk Grove Aquatic Center since this facility is opened. Of those 13, four are currently on staff, and eight of the other nine have either gotten a promotion internally or with other organizations. The one person that didn't get promoted was commuting about 45 minutes and chose to take a lateral position at a city much closer to where that person lives. So, with that understanding, we're very cognizant of the turnover, and we are continually looking at succession plans to try and mitigate that or to have ongoing operations. You know, we look at the pool is heavily impacted during high-use times. I'm sure everyone hears that, like, you know, it'd be great to, you know, do all these things at the pool. Everyone wants to use the pool, you know, 6:00 PM, June, when it's really hot outside. I think, you know, with our relationship with Lana, we're great about looking at how we're going to prioritize usage to try and make it that everyone in the community can make use of this facility. The next part, the next two I wanted to touch on, I know Lana is probably going to mention it a little in hers. The first is their inflationary costs of running an aquatic facility that just continue to rise. These are lar, these are facility costs driven that, you know, it's really tough to recoup for large year-round aquatic facilities such as gas, and that's the gas to heat the pool, electricity, chemicals. We are meeting with staff monthly, with your staff monthly, to mitigate any of these costs and to try and maximize any efficiencies where we can. Next, in the fiscal year 2223, there were some revenue shortfalls. Most of that was from, as we can really think back to summer of 2022, the start of the fiscal year, when we just weren't fully staffed. We're still trying to recover staffing-wise coming out of the pandemic. And I do want to let everyone know, that wasn't just for this facility. That was, A, everything in recreation, but that's also what we saw for all of our aquatics programs. As I mentioned, though, the good news is, moving forward, we've taken a lot of proactive approaches to mitigate this issue with having almost 200 staff, and as I'll mention later, we're going to have a high, looks to be a high retention rate for those staff. Other expenses, you know, with all of this staff, minimum wage is continuing to increase, which is an ongoing cost. You know, part-time staff now receive up to 20, up to 40 hours of sick leave, which we have to start budgeting for for when they take that time. You know, I would say for context, when I first gave this presentation to the council back in 2018, minimum wage was at $11. Now, it's at 16, so that's about a 45% increase. Lastly, you know, as we talk about the replacement of parts, services, and equipments, you know, that's just five years of just continual use. It's five years of constant sun, constant chemicals, constant bather load, you know, but that's something that every aquatic facility throughout the state and the nation are dealing with right now. I'm on a number of, I guess, working groups and chats where it's something that everyone's trying to wrestle with of, you know, the subsidy is continuing to increase, and how do we try and mitigate any parts of that subsidy that we can? Last part, I do want to talk about some accomplishments. You know, I've mentioned again that we have a really positive relationship of the staff and the city staff, which has aided in the success of a lot of things that are going on. With the new full-time supervisor and coordinator, we're fully staffed in aquatics in total, which is great because that helps for, I guess, more hands, equals lighter lifting. We have all these professional development opportunities that we tried, so we can continue to stay at the forefront in this industry. As I mentioned, we've had almost 200 aquatic staff, and we anticipate about a 70% retention rate. So, that'll be, that'll be really helpful in, we'll have less recruiting, more experienced staff coming back year after year after year. Water fitness is continuing to grow in both popularity and revenue, and that is, you know, attributed to some of the great instructors we have, as well as some of those demo days. You know, from a swim meet perspective, we were able to host the Bill Rose Classic and the Comstock Championships, both multi-day meets. You know, that just speaks to, you know, I think, I think if people asked, you can probably ask Lana, everyone wants to have a swim meet here. It is one of the premier facilities in all of Northern California. I think with that, Lana's going to come back.
So, thank you, Mike. So, as Mike said, his presentation kind of focused on the calendar year. Mine is focusing on the fiscal year, starting with fiscal year 2223. So, as you notice, the bottom number is a 44% increase, which I will tell you is disappointing and staggering to me, and I want to tell you that these increases fall into three pockets that were difficult for us to control, the first being utility costs. So, as Mike said, gas for pool heating increased by 110%. I'm going to give you a snapshot. So, in January of 2021, we paid $13,829 to heat the pool. In January of 2023, we paid $42,890 to heat the pool. Those are costs that we can't control. The pool needs to be heated in order for it to be a USA Swim sanctioned pool. We need to keep it between 78 and 82 degrees year-round. We do what we can to tarp the pools, to preserve heat and chemicals. Colder winters, higher demand on gas causes those utilities to rise. In addition, electricity went up 35%. So, utility costs are very, are variable that is very difficult to us, for us to control. Maintenance issues, Mike alluded to several of the maintenance issues which were unplanned for. We meet monthly now to discuss and monitor the budget. We are working through some of our maintenance issues and budgeting more money to ensure that these spikes don't happen in maintenance costs in future so that we're able to accommodate that at an easier rate, and so you're not seeing these giant increases exponentially. Last, the revenue shortfall. It's pretty hard to determine how many people are going to visit the pool in a year. We were just coming out of the pandemic. We were starting to see people starting to want to gather, but kind of tentative on it, and we didn't have the staffing to do that. So, that led to $108,000 shortfall for that year. Those three things together make up about $300,000, which is the difference in the subsidy. Moving forward to this year, we are about halfway through the fiscal year as of December 31st, and our picture is much brighter. I want you to know that we, both CSD and the city, are making its revenue expectations. We're at 50% for both user group revenue, and that includes swim mates. CSD is at 50% for public programming, with the higher months of summer and spring still to come. I am hoping for a very prosperous year. In general, we're budgeting for costs for electricity, gas, and utilities. We've tried to mitigate some of those spikes so that, as I said, we're not seeing those giant increases that we saw in prior years. And I will tell you that this facility has had us scratching our heads a little because we opened in 2019, we closed in 2020, and so really the baseline of what this facility actually costs is only coming into view now. So, this 2023 year was probably the first year that we had a normal operating year, and I use that term loosely, but we're starting to see what this facility actually costs. So, what is the path forward for aquatics of 2024? As Mike said, they've added winter swim lessons, which has seen 103% increase from December of last year. So, that's a great thing. We've increased, increased marketing of the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. So, we're trying to get more lap swimmers in. We're trying to get more people to use this facility. We still have lots of people who come and say, I didn't even know this was here. So, what we're trying to do is get people through the door, and once they know that it's here, our hope is that they will return. As Mike said, we have added a pool party location, so we will have several locations on the deck, as well as utilizing the room to maximize that space and increase revenue. The two meets that you see, the Delta League Championship in April and the CIF Sam Waukeen Championship, these are school-based meets. These are Elk Grove High Schools and other high schools in the region. So, this was a good get for us because, one, our swimmers can swim at home and compete here, and, secondly, these are meets that are held outside of the summer seasons when we have high impacts. So, our hope is that these swimmers will be here, can perform before a hometown crowd. It is a great get for us to have these two meets coming. This year, we're hosting two demo days on April 20th and April 28th. As Mike said, this is a free day for people to test out our aquatics fitness classes. Sometimes you don't want to commit to doing aquaspin or aqua jogging. This gives you a chance to kind of do a round robin, test everything out, do I like this class, and it really does increase participation in it because now you kind of know what it is, what the level activity is going to be, and so people are more prone to be able to register once they do these things. Our rec swim will open on Saturday, May 27th. We look forward to a good season and maybe a hot summer. Last summer was a little bit cooler than most, which was great for most of us, but not great for an aquatics facility. We've added more fitness classes. I continue to work with CSD to improve and expand those classes that we're offering. We're basically trying to come up with a new special event, so we're throwing around different ideas that are out there. And the meets that you see coming in July and August, these are large rec and USA Swim meets. These swim meets will bring 800 to 1,200 swimmers to the facility. Each meet is a two-to-three-day meet. So, those are hotel stays and sales tax generation, as well as meet fees. And we increased fees as of January 1st, so I was here not too long ago talking about that. The other path forward is we're seeking to increase the user group rate, probably when the contracts are due in 2025. We have not increased their rate since we made those agreements in 2019, so we will look to have those conversations with our three user groups, who are the school district, the Piranhas, and the Gators. Our solar array has come online, which has helped with some of our electricity costs. So, we're hoping that that will help to decrease some of the electricity costs that we're seeing. And then, lastly, the maintenance budget that I alluded to, that'll stop the spiking. So, lastly, I want to conclude by saying that we are becoming a premier facility in the region. I have lots of inquiries about availability, which we don't have any, which is a great problem to have. You know, and our investment in this facility is not just an investment in providing recreation, it's an investment in saving lives. You know, we're teaching kids to swim. We're building a recreation facility that people enjoy coming to, and it is something that I am very proud to manage. Happy to take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you so much for that. Before we go to our council colleagues here, I will open up the public comment opportunity, and nobody has signed up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and start to my left with Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, Mike, Lana, and great job operating the facility all year long. I do recall when we passed this that we predicted you would operate in a deficit, and your estimates back then are pretty spot-on, so I'm not surprised by any of this. I want to compliment you again on that video I saw posted about the cleaning of the pool. I don't remember where I saw that, on which social media platform, but that was, that was amazing. You had, you had no idea how, well, just how bad it looked, and then when you guys were all done, it was fantastic. So, just gives you an idea of how much it takes to maintain and operate this facility. But on the flip side, it's, it is a huge treasure, not only just for what you articulated with these, these various meets, but families and individuals alike are using it every day. So, it's great to have this amenity in our community. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Brewer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Dobson and Ms. Yoshimura for this report. It was very thorough, but one of the things that I loved was the transparency that you conveyed of the challenges that we had all seen from the beginning, and how things kind of turned the corner this year. Does it look like we have a firm, a firm handle on our forecasting for attendance in terms of headcount coming every year? Because there's a lot of courses we're offering, there's a lot of events taking place, the competitive swim meets, the high school swim meets. How does all that play into the bigger picture of things? Because obviously, with a public pool, revenues and expenses will always be a little, a little skewed to the expenses side, but attracting people and bringing in new people, especially people who have just, are just now discovering District 56, discovering the aquatic center. Are we getting a good sense, based off of 2023 numbers, of what 2024, 2025, and 2026 will look like from a three-year outlook?
Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, Vice Mayor Brewer, I can answer that. I believe right now, the way that we are trending, we'll probably see increases in attendance slightly moving forward. I think, as I mentioned in that, like, some of the limitations that we had in the past were staff-related. Those are no longer limitations, so now we can offer more programs, like, we can offer more swim lessons. I think that the times that we have are kind of, I don't want to say set in stone, but they, they're a little more set based on making it available for user groups and other programs, but we believe that we have a, as long as it's warm in the summertime, people will continue to come, use, and utilize this. I think the more, those people that now more understand that we have it, gathering outside again is, I don't think, that much of an issue anymore. So we are starting to see the trend increase back to, I don't want to keep saying pre-pandemic, but let's just say, to the 2019 summer, we are sending, we are seeing those trends for all of our aquatics facilities.
I would add one thing is, one of the things that CSD staff and I are working on is trying to get schools to hold their end-of-year party here. So my goal is basically, like, if middle school people know that there is this pool, that they'll have their end-of-year party here, and then hopefully come back during the summer. So it introduces a new clientele. Our pool is a little bit scarier than Whackford, the slide is a little bit taller, the inflatable is a little bit tougher. I have tried it, I'm not doing that again, but, you know, we think that's our niche market, is that middle school, high school range. So Mike's staff and I are working together to try to identify those schools, talk to their activities directors, like, this is a great place to host a party. You know, and once that clientele kind of knows, and my hope is that they'll come back for rec swim and other programming as time goes on, bring their parents. We also, I work very hard to market our programming to the senior center, which is adjacent at the center. This is the prime target of a lot of water fitness, as it's low-impact, high cardio. So those types of marketing things are things we're working on together to try to increase participation.
And as we, as we attract, as we attract new people to use the facility, I noticed we have, we have those classrooms on the side, and are they part of a package of, of the rental for the actual parties themselves, or can they be used separately? Because I know there's been several workshops that have taken place there, but people use it as a gateway to go into the pool.
Yes. So primarily, right now, they're used as, like, pool party package rooms, or as a part of a rental type of a thing. They can be used for, at certain times, for, I guess, non-aquatic-related things. The danger is, we, it has to be at a time where we have staff there, or just because you have easy access to the pool deck. So our fear would be that we just don't want people wandering on the pool deck without some sort of staff there, just from a liability standpoint.
Well, I'm very appreciative of the information provided. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees, any questions, comments?
Yep, I've got some comments here. So, thank you for the report, I appreciate it. This is, this is a complex problem, right? And I think everybody out there, I think everybody in the room, every resident can sympathize with, you know, the inflation in the price of heating and fuel. And if you're not, then I maybe haven't paid your bill lately because it's, it's going up, folks. And I think, you know, the price of labor, that's obvious, right? I mean, I don't think anybody can disagree with that. You know, inflation in the pool and the chemical supplies, right? Those, those are things that I just, you know, it just totally makes sense, right? Everything has gone up in cost. And so revenue side is just one side of the equation for me, right? That's, that's a side that actually might be a little bit more difficult to control, particularly given our past, right, with the, with the pandemic and such. But what, we've had now two fairly large jumps, or this would be the second fairly large jump in expectation of what the contribution from the general fund is, right? And I'm a bit concerned that we need to have a little bit more confidence in what next year will look like, because I think we'd have some very difficult questions to answer if we see another jump of that size, regardless of whether it's within the span of control or not. So what I am going to ask my compatriots here, if you would be willing to come back, bring back in 60 days, a plan, a justification, a refiguring of the numbers, so that we have a little bit more fidelity and understanding what to expect and what we can control in the next one and three years. I think if we fail to do that, then we're going to be in, in a little bit of trouble. We at least have to ask the question, we got to dig a little bit deeper. So I would ask that, that we can bring that item back in 60 days.
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you. And again, I appreciate it, I get it, I get it, but we just, we got to take a look at it. One of the things that does trouble me is, and I don't know, you know, how, what do you call it, a grandstand wears out in five years? That seems a little short to me, so maybe we can take a look at the equipment that we have. Is it, is it failing faster than it should? I know it might be out of warranty, but it sounds to me, and again, I'm not an expert, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that I'm an expert, but some of those things sounded like they should have lasted a little bit more than five years. So maybe we can take a look at the equipment and seeing if it's failing at a faster rate than we had expected, and, and adjust our budget accordingly. The, the purpose is simply to eliminate surprise. So, thank you, appreciate it.
I think, yeah, to your, to that end, on the equipment, given that for two years it wasn't even used, so that makes it even, you know, so the wear and tear seems pretty rapid. Councilmember Robles.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I guess my only, there's a lot of different concerns, right? And I think my colleagues brought up a lot of good points. For me, mostly it's surrounding, are we marketing the aquatic center to the best ability? And Lana, you touched on tailoring it towards specific after, end-of-year pool parties, and I think that's, that's awesome, and that's very creative, because we need to start thinking of ways to draw in more money, right? And I don't know if it's with another swim meet, or, you know, looking if there is somebody regionally here who is going to the Olympics that we can get and start doing workshops. And just being creative in a space that we have, right, to kind of generate more money, just because I, I think it's really important to kind of bring different stuff, and I know you're doing it, so I'm all for it. Any support that we can do on helping on that and, and selling that, not only to our community, but to the surrounding communities, please let us know what we can do. And if we need help to strategize on what we can come up with, count me in. I like to strategize too, so, thank you.
I definitely appreciate that. Right now, I am working on a campaign that I saw called Get in the Zone, meaning your heart rate zone, so swimming is one of the best low-impact, high-cardio activities to basically get heart healthy. And so that's something that I am in the process of marketing right now, and the fact that the pools are heated. I think a lot of people don't realize the pools are heated, and while it's 60 degrees outside, the pools are 78 to 82 degrees, so it's actually quite nice to swim laps there. We offer a lap swim from 9:00 AM to noon most days, so it's a good lunchtime workout. I put a blurb in the city manager newsletter to try to get some of our employees out there. I've created a banner to do that. We're trying to market those, availability of those opportunities as well. So I'm trying to think a little bit outside of the box as well. I will tell you that swim meets are very specialized. So if we brought a Olympic swimmer, I think that that would be specialized to basically people that are in competitive swim versus the general public. You know, and there are lots of different ways to raise revenue. I'm going to give you a prime example. The recreation swim season is about Memorial Day to Labor Day, it's about 10 weeks of time. So three of those weekends, we're hosting very large swim meets, which closes it to the public, and Mr. Dobson and I will tell you that we usually make more money on rec swim than swim meets. That's a policy decision. We don't build 50-meter water to host rec swim, you want those large meets to come into time. I have limited those meets to two meets a year to balance the public's ability to utilize a facility with those larger meets. The new facility at Natomas, they limit their swim meets to once a month during the swim season. So that's, that's a direction we can also look at. So we are exploring every option we possibly can as to how to raise that revenue bar and to decrease costs. I will tell you, if you see in 2022, 2023, the cost that we could control, the other expenses, that was a 58% decrease. Anything we could do to save costs, we tried to do in that year, knowing that the utilities were very high, so where we could, we tried to cut back, knowing that other areas were going to take the higher percent of our budget. So I am very, very deeply committed to getting to that number. I do take this job very seriously, and I want to make sure that this is a facility that makes sense for our community.
Has there been any, and I know this is probably super early, but I know that there's a lot of swimmers that go from six to seven. Has that been an option, or, because I know Councilman Soon would like to go and swim from six to seven before the day gets started.
The difficult part is, as Mr. Dobson said, everyone wants to swim at that time.
Yeah.
And I have user groups who really want that time, and they're swimming at, right now, $10 per lane in 18 lanes of time. And they have six to 10 swimmers per lane, so it's really a benefit to our community and our youth to do that. And then if I reserve that time for, let's say, lap swim, I can't guarantee that somebody's going to come in and do that revenue, but I can guarantee the $10 an hour with a user group.
I'm thinking like Fleet Feet Elk Grove, right? Is there something that we can do, like a aquatic center? I don't know swim team, I don't know what they're called, so I'm not a swimmer, but kind of create something like that, that we created a club, so that, I don't know, folks can come in and...
Yeah, so actually, I feel like we're strategizing right now. Actually, I can ask this question.
Yeah, probably not the best.
As soon, as soon as we opened, one of the things that we did was, we reached out to them to see if they wanted to do a triathlon club. The unfortunate thing is, they want to practice Monday through Thursday after 6 o'clock, and there, and there's not, and they couldn't guarantee users, and as Lana just said, there's, you know, there's, there's the swim teams, there's various other things that are going on during that time. So I also, like, some of those things, we have also reached out. I do want to also say, like, you know, as a, as a member and a steward of the CSD and of taxpayer dollars, like, we're all committed in trying to mitigate any of the expenses that we can to maximize revenue, like, obviously, since I have to, you will see me here at least once a year with this presentation, as long as I'm with the CSD, that my commitment to you all, as well as to my board of directors, is that we want to be good partners, so.
Thank you, and I'll just wrap it up, that I, you know, excellent presentation, and I think you see full acknowledgement that we understand why we've seen those rise in costs. And I have, and I know my teammates here have full faith in, in both of you on how we can cut costs and areas of improvement. So I'm going to defer to the experts here and let you come back to us and let us know how we can help. Like I said, we're here to be supportive, but the numbers are the numbers, and the costs go up just like they have for everybody else, so that's just the reality of things. But thank you again for this presentation. All right.